Um, after presentation, because I believe that's what everyone else is doing, I believe, right? Right. I will, I will mute myself except when you call on me to make up public comment, um, Chair Bash. Thank you.
What they're trying, they're gonna put in, please do so now. We are going to come back into session for our workshop. It is August 28th, 2019 at 2:07 PM. Call this meeting to order. Do I have any amendments to the agenda? Have a motion, please.
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion. Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Hi.
Vice Chair Voice?
Yes.
Chair Posh?
Hi. All right, moving on to number three, projects. Curry County Housing Study Presentation. Summer, were you going to introduce someone?
Yeah, so, um, thank you, Commissioners, for giving us this opportunity. I know that there's going to be a lot of material and data presented today, and we're just grateful for your time. This is a culmination of efforts from many organizations that are excited to work together and collaborate and make some things happen as far as housing goes in the county. Our first presentation is from Thomas Eddington. He is with CZB. Coincidentally, Thomas's organization was contracted to complete the housing study that was done in late 2018. And he's got about 30 years' experience in housing studies and work, CZB specifically towards housing, over 20 years. They worked in Tillamook County, Coos County, and now Curry County. So we're excited to have him share some of the information that he's collected and help us move forward.
All right. So, do I just plug this in up?
Yeah, I'll take it. I'll plug it in.
There's a file, and then the top one is the document. Not, not in the top one. You'll see it.
Welcome back to Curry County.
Thank you.
Mr. Eddington.
Good seeing you.
No, not this time. I'm innocent.
Let's try it.
All right.
Oh, it's actually, it's actually, yeah, this is mine.
Here, it's on this laptop.
Oh, there it goes. There it goes, no?
Oh, there you go.
That mouse, maybe the battery's dead. That one ain't working either. So am I. Hey, just carry a microphone up here with you and just use the laptop. You have to have a microphone when you speak, so it's on the record. Grab one of those microphones, sir.
Great. I kinda get to hide down here.
Looks like a setup, doesn't it? You want a chair?
No, no.
You okay?
For some reason, the wireless isn't working.
Okay, so is it okay if I kinda hang here?
Sure, absolutely.
You guys, good? Good. I kinda get to hang out and hide here. Okay, so, thanks for having us back again, and as Summer had noted, we had the honor of working with you guys about a year ago on the study. And so, what I thought we would do to kinda kick off what you're doing with regard to housing is, oh, thanks, is walk through some of the findings from that study. And so I've got like 20 or so slides. Some of this can get a little data-heavy. If it does, tell me to hurry up and get on through that. I'm hoping about like 15 or so minutes if that works. But if you also have any questions, if there's something you don't understand, please definitely stop me, and we'll walk through it.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So, certainly, when we think of housing, I think we typically think of quality of housing, type of housing, structure, et cetera. But, again, I think it's always important to remember that housing is the most important part of our community. It's an infrastructure. It's a foundation to our community. And so, as we look at housing, we don't want people to think that it's just an individual house that we're looking at. We're looking at it collectively and foundationally. If you look at, is that really loud out there? Okay. Yeah, if you look at housing in Curry County, you've got over 12,000 housing units in the county. And if you think about the median household income, it's at about 42,000 right now. So, based on that, you would have about 6,400 households that fall below median and exactly about 6,400 that fall above. If you look at this, this is not quite fitting on here. Um, let's see here. If, um, is there a way to make this fit the page, do you know?
Isn't there a little minus?
Here?
In the middle of the screen, the minus button, just above households.
Next to the little hand.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay, so there we go. Whoops. Okay, so you can see the bottom now. Okay. If you, if you take that into account, part of our initial analysis was to look at the number of houses that a median-income household could afford in the community. At the very bottom of this, you'll see 20. So if you're at median income or less as a household in this community, there are about 20 houses on the market at any given time. If you're above median income, there's about 400 units for sale in this, in this income bracket. So as you can see, there's a bit of a skew. In a perfect world, it would be about...
You can turn that off now. This is a presentation. Thank you.
So, in a perfect world, that would, it should be about half and half. Remember that a median-income household can afford about three, three-and-a-half times their salary, so they'd be at about $135,000 house. You obviously don't have that many units in this community that are at $135,000. Sure. So, um, part of the challenge that we wanted to address was to look at if this mismatch could be corrected, and kind of where it started and how it started.
So this is, this study was done when?
This was done in 2018.
Okay.
So, most of the slides you'll see in here were 2016, 17, 18 data, so you'll see that moving forward.
Thomas, real quick, was this the study that Allcare gave us money for?
Correct. This is just a quick analysis of units for sale. Again, down at the bottom, you can see 20 units would be available for those earning median income or less. All of the additional houses for sale are, of course, no surprise to you, much higher-priced, out-of-reach-of-median-income households. So, how did this market get so skewed? Where did it go? A little bit of right. Can you see that? Good. Okay. This is just a comparison of Curry County to Oregon. You can see the population is up for both Curry County in the blue on the left, on the right is Oregon in the gray. You can see that the age cohorts in the county are up significantly more than the state. That's not a surprise. You have a number of retirees who move into the community, making you the second-oldest county in the state. You can also see the third line down, the median household income. This has been an area that's been somewhat challenged throughout the country, but certainly significantly here. It's up over the course of the past 16 years. Again, this is 2000 to 2016 data. It's up, but if adjusted for inflation, it's down. This is one of the issues that's happening nationally. Our wages are not keeping up with the cost of goods. And so, as a result, we're getting further and further pinched in terms of housing.
So which inflation index did you use to determine?
We use federal CPI. So about 2.3, give or take.
And so we all know that that's excluding a lot of things that people have to have.
That's right. It's not exact, but it is a national adjustment. You can also see that housing values are up significantly over that period, so about 50%, where wages are up 28%. Again, they're up 28%, but if adjusted for inflation, they're down about 8.5%. You can start to see where the mismatch is starting to happen. Not unique to Curry County, maybe exacerbated in Curry County, but not unique. Population trend, you can generally see that Curry County maintains roughly the same population trend as the state of Oregon. You're generally increasing. It's in migration, not births. The age cohorts was also something that we wanted to understand. So this is the silent generation on top, the boomer generation, the Generation X, and then millennials. As you can see, the boomers are, you know, relatively steady, but they're your most significant demographic in the community. Silents are declining. Exers are slightly increasing, and millennials are declining. The millennials, of course, you can see at about 3750. The reason this is important is to understand that the age cohort that is growing here is also a cohort that may be retired and/or not working. That's got an impact to the economy. They may have additional discretionary income. Again, you can start to see where the housing might favor that market, and if you're an entry-level household working, you're probably going to be challenged. The components of population change, as I said earlier, you're not growing as a result of births, actually. If you look at this top part of the graph, it's your net in-out migration. It's all positive. So every year from 2001 to 2016, you've had a positive net in-migration, new migrants to the community. If you look at natural increases, you've lost every single year since 2001, and the projection is that you'll continue to lose population based on natural birth, natural death, if you will. So if not for in-migration, the community, the county, would not be growing in population. Sure.
Sir, yes, we're gonna have to, you're gonna have to have a microphone, first of all, to answer questions, and if, if we open these presentations up to a lot of questions with our time constraints, we may have issues, so...
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm just...
So, in a nutshell, the word is out. Again, probably not a surprise to you, you've seen the impact of people moving in from California, other parts of Oregon, other parts of America. 70% of the county's residents were actually born outside of Oregon. So as a community, you're pretty diverse in terms of your demographic and your geographic Housing built per year, here's where you can start to see further constraints in the housing market. From World War II to 2010, you had about 192 housing units built per year. That was the average. Some years significantly more, some significantly less. The decade from 2010 to 2017, the most recent data that we have, you're averaging about 44 units a year. So you're starting to see the pinch, that we're not building the same amount of housing that we have been historically. Yet, our population is roughly growing at the same pace it has been over the past 30, 40 years. You can start to see the crunch down here as well, graphed by decade. Also challenging the community is the fact that the bottom number is the one in particular that I was going to point out, is almost 20% is vacant seasonal housing. This is Airbnb, VRBO, seasonal rental. It could be a second-market unit, but this is housing that's kind of been pulled out of the community. And so if you're a, a new household into the, into the area, you're just starting your first job, you're just starting your family, you're actually starting with about 80% of the housing stock available to you, because that other 20% is aimed toward the tourist market. That's a pinch. What impacts housing in Curry County, so we kind of walked through this in the plan in detail, I won't go through a lot of it, but it is issues of aging, issues relative to the economy, and I'll go through this one slide per. In terms of infrastructure, right now, across the country, housing is not necessarily thought of as a type of infrastructure. But ultimately, I think that you're going to start to see communities think of housing as infrastructure. We think of roads as infrastructure. We think of trails as infrastructure, but we've not yet thought of housing. I think that, moving forward, those communities that are able to make an impact in the housing market are going to do it because they're investing in the housing market. They're investing in gap financing, they're investing in rehab opportunities, et cetera. And so, monies that might go toward other infrastructure may have to get aimed toward housing for a while. That is a given to get. It's a bit of a trade-off. It's a hard discussion to have. It's, it feels additive. We're adding more money into the expense side of our budget. I understand that. But I will say that all housing actions will require money. Keep that in mind. As the economy has transitioned, your challenge is also that 40% of your workforce is in the retail sector. That's the lowest-income economic sector that we actually rank, you know. Ultimately, an hourly wage there could be about $10 an hour, that'd be $21,000 a year. It's very hard for somebody making $21,000. They're out of the housing purchase market, but that can even be a hard market to rent in. That'd be about $500 a month rent. It's hard to find a decent $500 a month apart. We're aging. I said that earlier. We're now at about 55 years old. We're the second-oldest county in the state. And so, that mismatch, those in the workforce, those who are retired, that presents problems for economic opportunities for young people, number one, and again, housing relative to this discussion. The next few slides are some population pyramids, and I think that these are kind of interesting. In a perfect world, a population pyramid would be small at the top and big at the bottom. Younger people move up as you age, you, you slide off that demographic cliff, and you're no longer a part of the population pyramid. As you can see here, we, we have, the majority of the population hovers between about 60 and 75 years old, and the percent that are under 24 are significantly lower than, they're less than half of those in the 60 to 74 range. So it's somewhat of an inverse pyramid, a challenging place to be. If you compare it to the state of Oregon, you can start to see why Curry County is the second-oldest county in the state. We're a little bit lopsided, obviously, in that regard. But the comparison is also helpful to understand what's going on around us and where political energies might be directed from a state level. Then if you look at it over time, the top graph is 2000, the second one down is 2010, 2017 is the one that's highlighted in the square, and the bottom one is 2040, where we're going. Ironically, where we're going is that our largest demographic will be the demographic that is over 80 years old. So we're, people are living longer...
If they stay.
What's that?
If they stay.
If we, if we make it, right? But that presents other problems. You know, you want to make sure that you have a workforce that's going to take care of you, somebody in the medical field, a phlebotomist, somebody to fill prescriptions. I mean, at that time in life, you'll need additional assistance. So, housing, at that point, can impact the economy and vice versa, right? And so it's something to pay close attention to. That's why you want to get it right. Also within the county, this might be a little bit hard to see, but that top number is, can you see that? A little bit. That's the $100,000 households. You can see that in the year 2000, they made up about 4%, 4.5% of the community. By 2016, they were at almost 14% of the community, which is about a 300% increase. It's a significant increase. The state doubled in those households. So, we, the county tripled, which means we have more and more wealthier people at the top moving in. That's also a challenge, because in the construction industry, those people are moving in, they need housing. Generally, the construction industry is gonna aim to them. It's gonna build for them. You're gonna build where the money is, you're gonna build where profit margins work. To aim energy low will take commitment from the government and nonprofits. It's a big ask. It's a hard ask. I won't walk through this in detail. You know that you've got distinct markets throughout this county, whether you're looking at Brookings, Gold Beach, Port Orford, Harbor, which is not a designated city, but it is a census-designated place, and of course, the county. I won't walk through this, but you definitely have dispar, disparities, discrepancies in terms of housing costs in one area versus another. In a nutshell, it's a number of unique circumstances, but they're probably not that unique to you. You may know them, you may not know how to put the numbers to them, but they're probably pretty familiar to you. So, as we look at the next couple of slides, you're just a couple of recommendations moving forward, but as we look at solutions, keep in mind that there is no single solution. There is no perfect solution out there that you can copy. There are some that you can kind of replicate, but at the end of the day, it's probably something you have to create and invest in. The county was built on housing. That is a fundamental basis of your economy, the vacation market, et cetera. Next steps to address this, you can't see that, but these slides represent that. Steps to address it may be, again, designating funds. This is, again, a huge ask, but designating funds toward housing infrastructure. Partnering with the community and major employers. We heard from many people when we did the study. We held different focus groups. We reached out to different people, different employers, different sectors of the economy, asking them what the challenges were. These are a few of their quotes, but ultimately, as we spoke with people, it was really those who were new to the area, not to retire, but new to the area to work in the community, that had the biggest challenges with housing. Another issue that could help with regard to housing is the different communities are, are behind in some of their, their planning work, in terms of their comprehensive plans, in terms of what their goals are. In a perfect world, your comprehensive plan would be updated every like five or 10 years. But also, the reason that's important is not to actually go through the exercise of doing the planning work, but because the budgeting for the community should be based on a comprehensive plan, so that the community knows what they're getting, what the vision is, what the core values are, where we're aiming. And so, one of the recommendations would be to update that, so that everybody's on board, so that they understand the direction and goals for their community. I know you guys are actually doing some of this, the regulatory, the regulatory construct that's in place. Zoning, building and permitting, service development charges, these are all impediments to workforce housing. In particular, service development charges can be as high as $11,000, but it doesn't matter if you're building a $500,000 house or a $100,000 house, the cost is the same. That can be prohibitive to a, to a starter homeowner who's gotta pay 11, almost 10% of the, of a house, if it were $100,000, which it's gonna be significantly more. But starting to look at opportunities to defer those payments, wrap them into mortgages, et cetera, may be an opportunity. I'm not sure, the most recent news with regard to US Borax, but I know that there were plus or minus 1,000 housing units proposed. I know that when then that was renegotiated, there were some affordable units put into place. If there is an opportunity to look at that moving forward, to renegotiate that, or to get more explicit in what that affordable housing looks like, what the parameters are, what the income levels are, we would recommend wrapping that into that development agreement, so that you know exactly what you get out of that, out of that development. And just simply, why do we care? It's because everybody we interact with on a day-to-day basis, whether it's when you go to a restaurant, to a bar, to a coffee shop, you send your kids to school, everybody is going to be impacted by somebody who needs workforce housing, who lives in the median-income world, and they're going to need housing in your community. And then again, moving forward, it's really about reframing the dialogue, which is actually kind of what you guys are doing today, by having an emergency summit. So kudos, kudos to you, because the dialogue of housing has kind of been misunderstood for a number of years, and so if we can put it in a new light, if we can frame it for the, for the, in terms of the importance that it has within our community, I think that we can start to make a difference. Because where you put your energy is where change will happen. And so, moving forward, build off of this today. You've got some, I know the Housing Task Force is going to speak today. I think working with them, that kind of collaboration is going to be a good first step. So, that's kind of the, the plan in a nutshell. Sorry if that got a little bit wonky with some of the data, but we had to give it to you.
Question? One, do we have a copy of this presentation? Because I would like to have a copy.
I'll make a copy for you. I'll beat ya, I think.
Thank you. All right. Are you gonna hold questions till the whole, for all the presentations? Yeah, that's what I think, is let's get through the presentations, and then we'll do the public comments and questions after that, okay?
Perfect. Thank you.
Sorry for the inconvenience.
Way to hang in, though.
All right, so next, we're going to have Housing Strategies, Tualatinee Nation, and Low and Income, or I'm sorry, Low and Moderate Income Housing Projects. Commissioner Gold.
Let me just say something. I went to their ribbon-cutting ceremony down there in Smith River. They have some housing units that are amazing. When I went in there, it was like, I was expecting, you know, tenements close together. That's not what I saw. I saw some beautiful homes, some of them ocean view. So, Talawatani folks get first grabs at this, that these are gonna be rental units. And so I just asked one of the tribal council members if they would adopt me, because I wanted to move into one of those. They were so beautiful. So I talked to Tim Hoon, who kind of spearheaded this whole project, and asked him if he would be willing to come and talk to us and show us how something could come to fruition, rather than just talking about it. I think it's important that we see that something can actually be done. So, Tim, we'll put you on.
By the way, I'd just like to recognize Jerry Lynn Thompson in the back there. Hi, Jerry, for the Tualatinee Nation.
Commissioner Gold, thank you. Say it on. Thank you, and thanks for recognizing Councilmember Thompson, and thanks for the invitation to, to share about our project and to kind of work in partnership to address these housing issues that, you know, are, you'll hear a little bit, Talawa citizens have all the same issues that we just saw affected by those income. But let me get this open here in one second. I'm the Planning Director for Talawatani Nation, and here with Tribal Council Vice Chair Jerry Lynn Thompson to just share a little bit about the tribe's efforts to address affordable housing and, you know, offer to, to work together to solve problems on a bigger scale. Just some background on the tribe, you know, folks may know that Talawat people have lived in their... You know, folks may know that Talawa people have lived in the area since time immemorial, you know, down in the main villages where centered around Smith River, but Talawa people live in Curry County, Delnar County, you know, fishing for smelt along the ocean, they're smelt drying, and those things continue today, right? Whether they're still, Talawa people still live and work and carry on traditional practices and, as well as, whoops. Oh, here's, the arrow is the easier method. And if you think about the tribe as a whole, there's over, just over 1,800 tribal citizens, and notably, half of those live in and around Smith River, so almost 900 within a 50-mile radius of the reservation there in Smith River. And thinking about the tribe's connections to Curry County, over 250 Talawa citizens live in Curry County, 40% of our government employees actually live here, and, you know, government headquarters are in Smith River. And the tribe is part of a tribal housing coalition with 11 Oregon and Northern California tribes, and specifically to bring additional housing and urban development dollars into the region. So, by working together, we can all boost our numbers a little bit, and it brings an additional $2 million into the region specifically for affordable housing. So, that's a, you know, there's like Slets Tribe, the Coqwell, Karuk Tribe, and then eight others. And similarly, to the report we just saw, the nation did a housing assessment in 2016, said, hey, what should we be spending our money on? What do people need? And we had, we have about two, people are interested in housing, because we had like 214 respondents to this survey. Typically, you know, and I'm happy to get like 50 people to respond, so everyone is interested in housing, and half of those folks indicated, you know, a sort of a dire housing need, right? I mean, we don't have to belabor that. They're paying too much in rent, you know, 50% of their income, or they're living in overcrowded conditions because they can't find, or, most notably, they can't afford a home, can't find a home to buy. They have a steady job, income, but not an affordable home. So, to address this, we had two projects, just efforts of the tribe to address affordable housing. We built 13-unit multifamily housing down in Brookings, there on Fife Field Street, that opened in 2016, and to speak to the need, it had 100% occupancy in about two months, you know, there's a waitlist. But then in 2018, and it'll be complete a year from now, in 2020, we call it the Dot Nocet Village, which is the North Beach Village, and you'll see a little map here in a minute. It's 21 affordable, single-family homes in Smith River, and there's a little map there, and you just see this depiction of kind of historical homes, and this is the 25-acre site, you see the California-Oregon border there, so it's just about five miles south of the border. And if you're familiar, it's on this slope that overlooks the ocean there. The tribe has owned the property since 2008, 2011. This 25-acre site, and we put in some infrastructure, and then hired an architect to come up with a home design, what should these homes look like? Well, we looked back to, how did the Talawa people, what kind of homes did they traditionally build? Well, they traditionally built a redwood plank home, and these homes were, you know, kind of built into the ground, and they had this offset roof, and typically, the front door faced west. And we had a series of community meetings to go through that, and we came up with this home design that, just a modern version of kind of a Talawa home, but just a nice home in general. And we tried to say, how can we make this home affordable? Well, so anyway, you'll see a little bit more of this home here, but the layout on this 25 acres, we tried to give, create, we grouped the homes together, but also created some common space, so that while homes are fairly close together, they're about a quarter-acre lot, there's also some common space, and also a community center, you know, where, because the homes are about modest square footage, also to keep the cost down, so there's two, three, and four-bedroom homes, and it goes from about 900 to 1,500 square feet. And so, these homes are renting now, and I'm going to just show you. So, December 2018, we were just getting ready to cut the pads, and then, this is actually, this was done by July, but here's what the homes look like now, and I think there's one more. You can kind of see construction progress here, you know, through the, just because of the funding, we had to start construction in January, which is an odd time to begin, but, whoops, keep going on that. And, but these were built with really 100% local labor. There's some, the tribe is the general contractor, so we have our own framing crew, and then it's all local subcontractors. We got, you know, window and heating and plumbing out of Brookings, and electric out of Crescent City, and so it's, I mean, that's one goal of the nation. We talked about, you know, the need to build homes, and where are we going to find funding, but we also, while we're building these homes, we want to put people to work. I mean, that's the good thing about needing to build homes, it means jobs.
Can I say just one thing? When you look at this, I lived in Southern California where the homes were like this close together, and when you look at this, they're spread apart, and also, one other thing I noticed is when you go in them, even though there's not very much square footage, they had high ceilings, so you had a feeling of space, so, I hope I'm not.
No, thank you, Commissioner, for mentioning that. I'm just trying to shortcut it here, but, you know, there's clear-story windows and, you know, high roofs, so that, to create this sense of space, and we spent a long time getting the homes sighted properly, so there wasn't another home in front of you to retain the view for everyone. So, we really were thoughtful about it, but at the same time, we said, when we start building these, we can't, we have to build them, like, with the idea, we didn't know if maybe down the road, we're going to sell them. Well, we can't, we can't sell a $300,000 home, you know, we need a, we need a $200,000 home, or there's something that gets, starts to be in the affordable range. And we also designed the homes with, they all have solar panels, plus they're very energy-efficient because of, I'm going to talk about the funding here briefly, because of the tax credit requirements, and California Building Code is, you have to build very energy-efficient. Anyway, the homes are designed to have a net zero use of electricity, so that the residents would have, you know, a zero electric bill. And that's important, because the average rent here is about, this is terrible, you know, from an operational perspective, you're trying to collect rent to manage a project, but it's great for the tenants to have an average rent of $500 a month. And the same thing up at Chi-Humanian Brookings.
So, do you want to be adopted, too?
So, but you think of the family, and it's because folks have an income, you know, that's what they can afford, so if your rent's 500, you can't, you know, if you then have a $150 electric bill, that's a lot. So, the solar, it was $15,000 per house, but it seemed worth it, you know, to, and, you know, and just to mention, how were we able to build these? Well, the, this is actually about a $12.5 million project, and the tribe can save up HUD dollars, that we receive a small amount of HUD dollars, save those up, and it is contributing $3.5 million. And then we applied for a competitive low-income housing tax credit. Right in California, every state has tax credits available, and we were awarded in 2018, $10 million in tax credits. So, how these tax credits work is, you know, the developer gets the tax credits, then you sell them to an investor. So, the investor buys $10 million of tax credits for, it was 8.9 million. So, they make their money, million dollars back on the tax credits, and then meanwhile, the project gets the 8.9 million to build the home. So, infrastructure ate up a lot of that cost here, that's, this isn't, you could build homes probably if you had the infrastructure in for less money, but that was the total cost of this project. And it's working out, not, we're on budget, and it's going to cost the $12.5 million. But, you know, we had these partners in there, you see the, you know, the tribe, California Tax Credit Allocation Committee, Travoy was our consultant, and Hunt was the investor, but, you know, there's, Oregon has tax credits every year, and we know all the other, you know, partners here in Curry County, and, you know, in the room, we share the, everyone's idea, you know, sort of concern about the lack of affordable housing, and stand ready to work with you and other partners to build in additional housing, you know, not that... Jerry, I think we spent all our money, though, right? We're ready to work, you know, in spirit. No, no. But, I did, so that's the overview of the projects, and I just wanted to applaud the efforts of everyone here today, the Curry County Commission, and thank Commissioner Gold for inviting the nation here. And, you know, I live down over in Crescent City, but I really admire the focus that everyone's putting on housing. With this workshop today, and the declaration, and everything else, really, it's inspired that things could, we can find some solutions and move ahead, so.
Commissioner Gold?
I guess the thing that intrigues me most about how you were able to do this, and you didn't really hit on it very hard, is this idea of tax credits, so that you can get the developers in here to do something. And I think we ought to explore this further. Today's probably not enough time, but I think this issue needs to be explored further with whoever comes in here. I think that's what would make it possible for us to get the homes here.
Yeah, there's a lot of multifamily housing built in the last 10 years in Crescent City, all with tax credit dollars. 90% of affordable housing in the country is built with low-income housing tax credit dollars. It's just...
And that really needs to be explored and actually come to fruition here, I think.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Appreciate it.
Very nice. Yeah, I don't either. I think the wireless is, something's the matter of the wi, it might be turned off on this computer. You have to turn the wireless button on.
Maybe that's what's wrong with the whole thing.
Sit right down, enjoy yourself.
It's okay, we won't. I don't think we've had bad breath.
We don't bite.
I'm not sure.
Becky, we don't bite. Hard.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to talk about issues that aren't as exciting as an actual structure. Those were pretty cool. I'm going to talk more about policies and what the county can do. First of all, I'd like to say that Oregon's land use laws, no doubt, limit affordable housing. LCDC's goal to preserve resource land is actually eroding resource land in Curry County and creating a housing shortage. And I've been here for a few months now, and I grew up here, and I see it firsthand, what's happened to the landscape as a result of some pretty severe restrictions on land that maybe should be allowed for development. We have right now, as was mentioned earlier, we have a lot of people moving into this county from other places, and they come with quite a bit of resources. So, we see large tracts of resource land in the county being bought up for one house. We see one house on 40 to 80 acres. That house typically is sitting there, and the land is no longer managed for resources, and it's not available for housing. So, the state's goal to preserve resource land for resource use is being undercut by large lot purchasers, many who in turn object to resource land management, like logging, cattle mining, gravel extraction, and workforce housing, and housing development generally. So, we have a difficult situation in Curry County. Not that those people are wrong and we're right, it could go either way, but it is a conflict that's out there that we deal with every day downstairs in the planning department. So, what I've tried to do here is identify some focuses that the county can take to maybe alleviate some of these difficult issues. The first one is in land development process itself. The land development process, the last 10 years in Curry County, has been a problem. It's been a difficult process to get through. It's been very lengthy for developers to try to get through the process. I can't answer the question as to why, except that there might have been some staff difficulties, maybe not enough staff, maybe staff that maybe not have been well-grounded in land use planning in Oregon, which is difficult. However, the county has taken a big turn in enhancing its land use development process. I would advocate that the county actually establish a goal of a 90-day review decision period for developers that come into the zoning counter. We've continued to work with developers and share ideas and knowledge. Apparently, that in the past didn't, wasn't a priority, but I would continue to advocate that it's a priority for the planning director and the planners to work closely with the developers, to help them understand the code requirements and get through the process. The commission, I appreciate that you've worked actively in supporting the role of the planning commission, and you've provided additional funding for planning staff, because those are really important. Oh, how am I supposed to turn this?
Arrow, just hit the arrow button.
Arrow button.
Know the little four arrows are down on the right side. The up-down, sideways arrows.
Okay, there we go. There's our actions. Okay, next issue I want to talk about are accessory dwelling units. Okay, so in 2017, advocated in large part by Representative David Brock Smith, there was legislation that passed this concept of allowing accessory dwelling units, there are dwelling units that are 1,200 square feet or less on lots that have an existing house. The county actually adopted some provisions for allowing accessory dwelling units. However, they're not allowed in all residential zones inside the urban growth boundary, which state law allows. The county didn't take advantage of that. Most of them are converted to vacation rentals, displacing worker housing, which was the original intent of the legislation. And based on some information that we got from a consultant firm, there's about 500 vacation rentals in the county without the required land use permits. Many of those are in these new accessory dwelling units that the county intended for workforce housing. So, what are we going to do about it? We should ban the allowance of ADUs to all residential zones inside the urban growth boundary, first of all. Also, DLCD actually allows two ADUs per one dwelling on one lot, and the county only took advantage of part of that legislation. So, we could change our zoning code to allow two ADUs per... So we could change our zoning code to allow two ADUs per unit of housing on lots within the urban growth boundary, which would give us a significantly larger potential housing base. We could require the vacation rental owners to get required land use permits. They are required to have a home occupation permit to run a business, which most of them do not have. And we can consider conditions on the ADUs to limit the conversions to vacation rentals. The next problem we have in Curry County is the available land that we actually have for development. There is a buildable land scarcity, especially in South County. City of Brookings is pretty well-built out, except for the Borax property. Our analysis in the county of billable land in zoning is about 40 years old. The vacant land that does exist doesn't have, it has the right zoning, but it's restricted by wetlands, landslide access, lack of sewer or sewer hookup. And we have 1,100 acres in South County that's inside the urban growth boundary that's unavailable until the county develops a master plan that has been lingering out there for about the last 25 years. So what should we do about these things? We should look at opportunities for transfer of development rights. That is a possibility to take resource land that will never be used for housing, take those rights to develop that and transfer them to land that is more developable. Measure 37, for those of you who remember, there were, there was the allowance of additional homes on resource land through Measure 37. We should allow those people who have unused claims to take the opportunity to transfer in development, which is allowed under law, and work with the large tract timber owners to see if they're interested in transfer of development rights. Conservation subdivisions is a concept that Julie's going to talk about a little bit later, but we certainly should develop a master plan for the 1,100 acres in South County on the hill, Harbor Hills. We can do a partnership with Amcoa Bank, who actually is the holder of those lands right now because the private landowners lost that land with the inability to get a master plan approved through the county. And then lastly, and this is a fairly significant action that I would recommend, that we take legislative action to remove the status of unique farmland designations for cranberries and Easter lilies. Okay, unique farmland designation, that was put there about 40 years ago. That's when we had a booming industry of cranberries and lilies. Right now, we have one lily grower left in Curry County and the cranberry growers are having equal concerns about their longevity. Most of these people that had cranberries and lilies now have cattle. And they have cattle running on land that LCDC perceives as being as valuable as prime farmland, Class 1, 2 soils, comparable to the Willamette Valley. So you can imagine the restrictions on those lands in Curry County, which don't apply anymore. By removing the restrictions, it allows us to go the route of Douglas County. Douglas County is pursuing an avenue of non-resourced lands and potential development into parcels 5, 10, and 20 acres in size, which gives an opportunity for people that are moving into the county to buy smaller lots instead of taking big chunks of resource land out of production, buying a smaller lot that may not be as valuable as far as resource RVs. We have a difficult situation with RVs in Curry County. That's where we get the predominance of unsafe living conditions. We have an overabundance of them. They're put in mobile home parks. They displace manufactured and mobile homes because they're not supposed to be in the mobile home park. They're legal at 14 days a month. You can vacation in an RV for 14 days, then you're perceived as being illegal in most places. We have emergency situations where people are trying to live in these RVs, both temporary and permanently. We see them in RV parks over 14 days. We see them, like I said, displacing mobile home parks. We see them on private land and we see them on federal forest land. They are a problem. County actions in terms of dealing with RVs. Continued code enforcement actions. We need to address issues that are unsafe and our code enforcement person does that diligently. We need to discourage putting RVs in mobile home parks because that displaces permanent living situations for people. We need to encourage the development of RV parks for park models and make that transition to allow park models to be permanent places for people that otherwise have a park model RV. And that transition is happening in state law right now. There was legislation that allows the transition of a park model to a permanent mobile home or manufactured home. We want to encourage development of new mobile home parks or manufactured home parks and PUDs. We want to encourage redevelopment of existing manufactured home parks. And there's an example of what's going on right now in Langlois through a federal investment tax program of the Opportunity Fund. A firm from California has come up, purchased the property, and is making that transition as we speak. We need to expand the zones that we have to allow PUDs for manufactured home and RV parks and develop good code standards for them so we get parks that look nice. Just the last thing I want to mention, the county needs to amend the code to reflect some legislation that happened just this last session. House Bill 2106 allows resource dwelling extensions. That just says if you ever got approval, you can extend that approval if you haven't built yet. House Bill 2469, this is an important one that most people don't know about. It allows a second dwelling on forest lands, provided that second dwelling is for a family member to help manage the forest. House Bill 3024 allowed restoration of dwellings on farmland that were established in as early as 1973. So the home could have been destroyed. If it has any recognition at all, you can now build it back on your farmland. And that was a significant piece of legislation because people wanted to go back and rebuild Grandma's house, which was cool. And the county needs to make the zoning ordinance changes so we can at least take advantage of what happened in the legislature. That's all I have.
What was that House Bill, the last one, 3...
3024.
3024?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Great job. Good job. All right, next.
It's okay. We can applaud all three of those presentations, huh? All three of them. Outstanding.
Next, we have Julie Schmaler with Housing Proposals, Director of our County Operations.
This is a little hard for me because I do talk with my hands, so it's going to be a bit of a challenge. So what I want to do is just kind of take everything that we heard today and kind of bring it all together and come up with some proposals for us to think about. I'm not saying the county will adopt all of these. Of course, the board has to decide that a lot, has to depend on public response to some of these proposals, but I do just want to go through some ideas with you. So first of all, I just want to, one thing I really focused on when I was doing my research is the role government plays in housing and preventing us from having available housing. And I just draw your attention to number six, that the policies that government has were often our own worst enemy. So we need to take a step back and stop looking at things in a traditional manner and start looking at what does it take to bring our county forward. So far, this board for 2019, they've been pretty aggressive on the whole housing issue. This workshop was scheduled months ago. They actually knew they wanted to address the housing issue. They wanted to make sure they had an emergency housing declaration in place first. And all three commissioners have been working towards housing to get us to this point. So we have Commissioner Boyce, of course, is researching the possibility of a housing coordinator. Commissioner Pash is aggressively looking and focusing on the veterans' housing. And Commissioner Gold has been working at different samples or different projects that we can actually do here in our county. Then, of course, the commissioners did adopt the housing declaration, which hopefully you've all seen a copy of. So we have some short-term goals, which I think can be accomplished within a year. I call a short term a year. So I'm just going to go through those pretty quick. First of all, the county has several properties. We can market them to get them developed and get them back on the tax roll. This requires the assistance of other departments and that becomes a bit of a challenge because, as you know, the county has reduced their staff in recent years to address budget shortfalls, which makes it hard when, it's easy for me to say market these properties, but when I have to rely on other departments to help out with that, we start running into issues. So we need to do that, but we need the cooperation of all the departments, which, I hate to say it here, it's going to sound like a broken record, you also need staff in order to do those jobs. We could donate urban parcels to nonprofits that will create mixed-use housing, so both moderate housing and the low-income housing. And we could reduce sale price on some of our lots for special groups such as veterans' housing. There is also a program that allows veterans to get some property tax relief. So I think that the Assessor does a great job advocating for that program, but I think by combining it with other programs such as reduced, or reduced sale prices to veterans, et cetera, we could actually increase some of the housing options we have there and increase homeownership to that sector. When you look at infrastructure, I look at everything that's available, the lack of housing, the rules in place, as well as the septic and road capabilities, all of that stuff. So I think we need to look a lot at our infrastructure. We need to, as Planning Director Crockett explained, look at our UGBs and possibly expand them. To hear that the county was the holdup on an 1,100-acre development or whatever it was is sad. I think the county needs, we need to have those policies in place to make sure that happens. So we need to look closely at those UGBs to make sure they can be developed. We need to partner with our cities on projects. City of Brookings, I'm just going to cite that as an example. If you look at the Lone Ranch project, my understanding is one of the issues there is the capability to get sewer to that property. We have to look at public-private partnerships. When you have a developer looking to extend sewer and a city looking to get involved in that and they're still not able to make it, perhaps that's when the county steps in with bonding or some other type of measure to help fund that sewer so that project can go through. So breaking down those silos and everybody working together is going to help us further a lot of these developments that are sitting there on hold. I'm suggesting a moratorium on vacation rentals. You heard Planning Director Crockett say we have about 500 of them that are out there. That's about 500 homes that don't have, I'm sorry, 500 vacation rentals that don't have permits. Those are also 500 homes that could have been used to address our housing crisis. So at this point, I think we're saturated on the vacation market. I think it's time to say enough is enough. We're going to start playing by the rules and we're going to start taking care of the people that live here as well. I think we need to provide more education to the community on programs that can assist them. Many people aren't aware of the fair housing laws, free legal services, or the Manufacturing Housing Cooperative Program through Casa of Oregon, Mobile Home Rental Assistance Program. If you're 62 years of age or older, family of two or more, or disabled, there are certain programs out there that can help you. Promote to developers the Agricultural Workforce Housing Tax Credit, which also applies to forestry operations, not just your traditional ag, and weatherization programs and other things of that nature. I propose we impose a residential construction excise tax. This was authorized in 2016 and it's a means to fund affordable housing. I'm not going to go into the details on this, but it is something that the county could look at and use those funds. What the state does is when they collect those funds, they actually go back to the jurisdiction where those are collected. So this is something we have not explored, but it can be used and it has to be used to create housing. Emergency permitting. The planning department does a great job in turning around if something, someone's house gets burned or destroyed by a flood. They can turn around those approvals pretty quick, but we need to look at all the agencies that are involved. Building safety, there's a lot to look at when you're building a house. You have plumbing inspections, electrical inspections, you're looking at the foundation, you're looking at the insulation. And what I'm proposing is we have a speed track for that, whereas they get those approvals to rebuild within 48 hours, the fees are waived, and we work together to get people in those homes so they're not spending their money in a hotel, which then is also taking up other housing that is available. Also, I think people should be aware of some of the programs that are out there to help them. If you are a victim of wildfire, there is some relief there. And then there's also, we could do a better job educating people on not building in forests or how to fireproof their homes, avoid wetland areas, which can eat at your foundation and concrete, or avoid in wetland areas and floodplains. Just want to talk a little bit about the accessory dwelling units. As Planning Director Crockett mentioned, that the state does allow them in the, or we do allow them in the UGB. We don't allow them in all the residential zoning districts within that UGB. That's an easy fix. That's something that a couple-month process, and that's not the county's fault, the state requires a couple-month process to get those text amendments in place, but it's something that we could address pretty easily. Also, at the current time, we don't allow the accessory dwelling units beyond their urban growth boundary and the state discourages us from doing so. They discourage us from allowing that. In my experience, I have worked out a process with the state where they would allow us to have something very similar to an accessory dwelling unit. It's actually called a detached living space, where you could have it in the unincorporated areas of the county outside of a UGB, provided there's no formal kitchen in it. So in other words, they allow you to have the kitchen sink, they allow you to have the cooktop, they allow you to have the microwave, they allow you to have the breakfast nook, but you can't have a convection oven or a dining room table. The only other thing, I know, I know, but it's, you know, it's a game, right?
You have good kneecaps.
It's what, it's what it takes to get it approved. The other caveat on that is the owner signs and records a deed saying it will not be used for short-term housing. It can only be used for long-term housing. These are just some ideas on how that can work. They can't exceed certain sizes. They have to be within so many feet of the primary home, et cetera. I do want to talk about cluster subdivisions, also referred to as conservation subdivisions many times. This is relatively new in Oregon. Josephine County is the only county to do this so far, and I'm proposing this is something that we look at. Basically, in the state of Oregon, they do not support density development. They prefer what I call cookie cutter development, where you have one home per lot and you just take 40 acres and if the lot size requirement is five acres, you just chop it into eight blocks and there you go. You've just destroyed all, in my mind, you've just rid yourself of a lot of farmland, you've increased your housing costs, and it's, to me, it's a waste of land. So I'm proposing that we look at some density-based development, and I'm just going to show you how it works. This proposal would also include such things as bonus lots and bonus options, which I'll talk about. So here's the example, and I'm, it's a little difficult to see, but hopefully you can see it. That first, this is using the example of if your lot size was for a 40-acre home. So in the top diagram, you see 160 acres, you see the wetlands, you see the farmlands, big lot. In this middle diagram, you see what happens under current law if you have to create lots the way there. You create these cookie cutter lots. This example is a 40-acre lot requirement, so you've got four lots. You can see how they've just taken a lot of land out of development. This gets worse, of course, the higher the, more residential the zone. So if, again, if this was a residential zone that allowed five acres, you've now wasted all of that land in these cookie cutter lots. The bottom example shows, if you look to the bottom right, you'll see where those four lots that are available are all clustered in one central area, which means you now have fewer roads, you have fewer utilities, the lots are smaller, which thereby brings all of the cost of those lots down. So instead of paying for a large 40-acre lot in this example, you're now paying for a small two-acre lot in this example. They're much more easier or affordable to develop. The other thing is it keeps the land available for farming, it keeps the wildlife intact so you're not fragmenting the wildlife. It also leaves more lands and wetlands available to retain water and catch water and protect us from future flooding and damage and flooding, flooding issues. I propose we start doing this. I also propose we take it to the next level and offer bonus lot options. So for example, I'm not saying this is the way it would be, but this is an example. If all the lots are not on prime farmland, so if they're situated on non-prime soils, you get a certain number of points. If they're not in a flood plain, you get points. If they're not on slope, you get points. If they're not on granitic soils, et cetera, you get the idea. And when you have so many points, you get an extra lot. So you can go from perhaps four lots to eight lots. So you can go from perhaps four lots to eight lots, all maintaining a lot of open land, farmland, that will help with future needs. Now, once that density is maxed out, once you meet your limit, you cannot go and further divide that land at a later time. So you meet your maximum density, and that's all you divide it. But again, the lots are smaller, easier, cheaper to develop. Cottage clusters is another idea. It's a neighborhood within a neighborhood. I would propose you allow them in a UGB. They are different from a planned unit development and from the cluster subdivisions in that you do not have individual ownerships. Basically, what you have is one lot, one owner, and they have the houses concentrated in a certain area. This, of course, is a very small lot in this example, but it's basically allowing more homes on one lot, but with standards, so you don't end up with overcrowding or some of the issues that associate when you have unregulated development on lots. There are other things we could allow to increase our housing options that we do not currently have in our zoning code. One is boarding houses, hostels, to address some of the tourist's needs. We could do tourist homes. We do have a definition of tourist facility, it needs reworking and it needs to be addressed. And then we could also create something for retreat centers, conference grounds, and then, of course, if we allow all these, create definitions for them, we have to decide what zoning districts we would allow them in. But currently, to not have a provision for simple boarding house, to me, is, I think we're missing the boat on some of these pretty simple fixes. Farm stays, the current planning director does allow farm stays under the code, it's not very clear in the code, and I think that would be advantageous to make, amend the code to make it very clear that we do allow farm stays and under what conditions. Again, by allowing that, that is a tourist use, but it does free up the other units, possibly or hopefully, for long-term residency. Camping, we have, as the planning director said, and as code enforcement, Mr. Fortman, who's here with us, can verify, we have a lot of issues with camping. So by state law, you can camp on forest or farmland for 30 days. In a campground, in a campground or an RV, it's limited to 14 days. We in the county, according to zoning, I understand, you can stay 14 days. The problem is it's not very clear, and I think cleaning up the code to make it very clear what is allowed and where will make it easier for people to comply with the codes. The other thing is we have nothing, it's not very clear how you can camp during construction, so I think we need to clean some of that up. And then we need to address our definition of trailer, camping, or recreational vehicle. Currently, the current definition would not allow a park model based on the definition, and by cleaning up that definition, we can free up park models to be allowed outside of a camping or an RV park. I'm proposing non-traditional shelters. Non-traditional shelters are basically, if you look at the definition of a single-family home, it's a kitchen, and then it has, you can have five unrelated people living there. What this does is it allows you to have a central building that has a kitchen, a shower, perhaps offices for social services, perhaps a workshop where people can have therapy in there, and then you have surrounding units, in this case, it's five, and those have nothing but a bedroom and a bathroom in them, but they operate as a single-family dwelling unit. So there's other things that I propose with these, such as notification of social services, emergency, contact numbers be posted, parking regulations, dog regulations, things of that traditionally accommodate uses like this. I'm proposing a transitional housing camp whereby the owner of the campground sets the timelines on how long someone can stay there, can stay in there. Right now, we have a transient lodging tax that was passed, and so we have people calling us saying, there are campgrounds that have people living in them long-term, and it's not fair that they don't pay a transient lodging tax when I have to. And they want us to come and enforce the codes on them and get those people out of those campgrounds. We can do that, but where are those people going to go? We have no place for them to go. We need to make provisions for those people with those campers and those trailers and where they're going to go. Transitional housing shelter is kind of, kind of like a homeless shelter. It's only open at night, it's only allowed in a UGB, has to be a certain distance of a bus shelter, things of that nature. Again, these are things our codes don't allow that we can do a quick fix and the codes can allow. Want to talk to you a little bit about what we call Conex boxes or storage structures. They're also known as intermodal structures. Basically, they are the shipping containers. You see these a lot of times on marijuana grows or in some other areas. This is a use that our Assistant Economic Development person is very excited about because she really supports these, but these are very inexpensive ways to create housing. This is basically, you take your Conex box, and you make some revisions to it, and you can have a home. I caution you, because a lot of people see these for sale already built as homes on Amazon, and they want to get them here, you can't do that. You know, we do require in the state of Oregon that an inspector look at the wiring, that he look at the plumbing, that he look at all these things as these homes are built. But there is nothing in the current code that would prevent you from bringing in an intermodal structure and converting it to a home. They're just not popular right now. What I am saying, though, is that we advocate for these as well, but we have some standards in them. I think we have to add something to our code that says unique structures are allowed, such as the intermodal storage unit that I just showed you. However, I think we have to have some standards on there. In this situation here, I think that we should make it very clear these are allowed, but we specify a certain ceiling height. There are studies out there that show if you go with a low ceiling, there are some psychological issues that associated with that low ceiling, being boxed in, the feeling that you get from living in a smaller structure like that. You're also limited when you can put in ceiling fans. So the recommendation on these are we only allow them if they have an eight-foot, nine-inch ceiling height, which, again, addresses those psychological issues that go along with living in an enclosed box. There is some appeal language we could add in there. Right now, if somebody wants to appeal a subdivision or a development, there's a very lengthy process that's involved, and I think we can put some appeal language in there to make that process a little easier and cleaner. Moving aside from those tax amendment issues, I want to just talk to you a little bit about staffing issues. As you heard, there's a lot more we could be doing. Staffing is a limitation. I just want to go through, these are the houses that we authorized. So you can see in 2011, 2012, we permitted 29 homes, and by 2018, that jumped up to 92 homes a year, or that past year. What's interesting when you look at these numbers is you also went from like five or six people issuing these homes to two or three. So as staffing decreased, permit load went up 400%. That has to be addressed. You cannot effectively run or create housing without an investment. The first speaker said it correctly. You have to invest if you're going to do something, if you're serious about increasing your housing. Long-term goals. As Commissioner Boyce has been advocating for, a housing coordinator or housing program is something I wholeheartedly support. I do feel it should be county-wide. I have not talked to the cities about this, but I think this person should serve the cities and the county. I don't think there should be jurisdictional boundaries on the housing issue at this point. I think we need somebody who can go in and apply for HUD dollars, CDBG dollars, work with multifamily housing as well as farm worker housing. You need somebody that can do it all. One of the issues we have in Creighton County right now is we cannot apply for CDBG dollars because the county has all their, you get one CDBG grant at a time, and ours is tied up in a Head Start project that has been going on for over five years. It's time to wrap it up so we can get some more money in here. We need somebody that can work with developers. We need an ombudsman that can go back and forth between the developer and the problem. If they're having a problem with the planning department, they can go in there and they can navigate those issues and help them get through all those issues. They can help them get their tax credits, they can help them work through all of those programs. I'm proposing a healthy homes program and a homebuyer education program, but along with this comes the cost of, the idea of how do you fund it? Ideally, we would find grant funding for the first two years for the program, and after that, I'm recommending that the admin dollars from the HUD and CDBG pay for it, as well as that CET, that tax that we talked about earlier. And proposing, we revisit the issue of an occupancy tax, which is a special tax if you have a second home, because that second home is taking away housing, permanent housing from somebody that could be living there. If you're going to cause a housing problem, you should help solve the housing problem. So with a healthy homes program, this goes back to some work that was done in 2013 when we had a health assessment of our homes, and they found major issues with the people, the living conditions for people that had to live in campers in mobile homes. We have a very, very high incidence of respiratory problems in this county, higher than anywhere else, and it's due to the condition of the homes they're living in. We have severe mold issues. There are major issues when it comes to some of these mobile homes and campers that people are living in. So I'm looking at a phase, two-phase program. The first one is get rid of the people that are living in these outdated campers. So there are certain, if the camper predates a certain period of time, I think it should be targeted for replacement. People that are typically living in an old camper cannot afford a mortgage, so I am proposing a 0% grant, basically, until that property is transferred. So in other words, we help them upgrade, get into a safe living condition, not exceed $20,000. So in other words, a small home, a tiny home. And then that money is repayable upon transfer of the property. So when they die or they sell it, that's when the money gets paid back. A lot of people would say, why would we invest $20,000 in that home? One, you're helping with the conditions of that person, which improves their health, which improves, saves us money on the healthcare issues. We know that there are social service benefits, fewer social service problems when people are properly housed. We also know that those people are now paying into a tax system. We also know that there's better management when you own your own home. So there's a lot of reciprocal things here that go with going from living in a camper to an actual stick-built structure. And you do get your money back, it's just that it takes time to get that money back. Phase two would be targeting those mobile homes that are not built to current mobile home standards. This is a longer program. We're looking at 771 mobile homes. This program would be slightly different, where it would be looking at where you're actually giving a grant to help them with the down payment to get the new mobile home. Oftentimes, people can, we're seeing a little bit more money when you're getting into some of these situations, but many people, they can afford to continue to make the mortgage payment, but they are unable to save the money for the down payment. What this does is it grants them the down payment money so they can then get a mortgage on a new mobile home. One thing this county has not looked at in the past, and we can look at, is urban renewal. Urban renewal has historically been looked at as a city problem, or, I'm sorry, city solution, not a city problem, but counties do, counties in Oregon do have the ability to have urban renewal districts. We have to declare blighted area, and then there's certain things we can do, but we can help and get, do urban renewal projects in counties. This is just a map of the counties that do do it. Jackson had one, I don't think it's no longer viable. There's Clackamas, Coos, and one other county, but there are examples out there for us to follow. Just a little slide on what it is and how you go about doing it. And then questions for the board, if they have any. I think I'll just wait until we're done with all the questions, though.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Melzer. All right, so we're going to open this up to the public comments that I have here. Ms. Rowe, are you still online?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay, so we're going to open up the public comments at this time. First public comment is from Mary Rowe.
Thank you, Chair Pash. I am Mary Rowe. For about 11 years, I have applied and advocated for homeless people, and I have served on the KUSS County Housing Authority for a year. My primary concern at this time is that we focus our efforts equally on housing for all of our residents with no special emphasis on workforce housing, nor any particular focus on families or veterans, although children should be prioritized. Currently, veterans receive BASH vouchers almost immediately, while others usually wait about a year in KUSS County. And veterans receive other across the board prioritizations with respect to housing. So we now need to ensure that other vulnerable residents are adequately served and not just those whom are needed in order for our community to function effectively. My main concern in this regard is with those who are physically disabled and are low-income senior citizens. Since South Coast Independent Living Services Guild lost its funding in KUSS about 10 years ago, physically disabled residents have lost voice and rights. Senior citizens also do not have much representation in KUSS County. There is a shortage of one-bedroom units here for seniors. For instance, the Housing Authority Senior Complex has a waiting list of about three and a half years, which is a longer wait than for other housing units. And Ocean Wind subsidized housing in Brookings has about a five-and-a-half-year waiting list for their one-bedrooms, all of which are occupied by seniors except for one unit. This is partially due to the fact that seniors do not move and are stable tenants. When the physically disabled and seniors are homeless, they are at much greater risk of not surviving, so please let's not overlook these two important groups. Secondly, I also want to recommend that any committee on housing include more members who have relevant expertise, as well as those who are stakeholders, such as representatives from each city, and those who are members of the group in need of housing. I also think that in order to ensure that housing is addressed in a way that is fair to all of our residents and to have the best accountability, that our county government needs to be at the center and at the helm of all of housing planning, and that a housing specialist who assists our county manager needs to be hired for this massive lengthy process. In response to all of the wonderful input that I have just heard at this meeting, I just want to say that eliminating RVs from combined mobile home and RV parks may eliminate residents who cannot afford mobile homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe. Next, we have Connie Hunter.
Good afternoon.
You can pull that one microphone up if you'd like to, so it's not in your way.
Sure, we'll do this and this.
There you go.
I just wanted to say that I'm Connie Hunter. I live in South KUSS County, and before I get started too much, under the county actions to expand the urban growth boundary, does that include land swaps for urban growth boundaries?
Pass through.
Because I recently read about a project that was started out with a land swap for urban growth boundaries. Okay, so I actually went up to Coos Bay this morning to be at the Oregon Health Authority and ODVA Community Veterans Forum for Behavioral Health, and we were supposed to give recommendations on behavioral health needs for veterans and addressing gaps in care. Well, when we started our BA Healthcare Summit 2.0, we said the biggest gap in care was the emergency department. Now, that's been taken care of pretty soon, especially for South KUSS County, and the biggest gap in care for our veterans, local veterans, beyond behavioral health, since 84% of our KUSS County veterans live below the poverty line, is housing. And so one of the things that really I was able to advocate for at that meeting, and these recommendations, and these forums are held all over the state, was to speak directly to the issues that were presented in the housing declaration. So the 84% of veterans being below the poverty line came from doing a little more math on that. So I wanted to mention one more thing beyond that. Of course, I'm going to advocate for veterans' housing because we have more veterans per capita in this county, but also suicide is so high, and we know that the Oregon Health Authority looks at all of the social determinants of health, and if you don't have housing and you're a veteran, you know, that might just be your tipping point. But not too long ago, I had talked to Alex Campbell, because I recognized that there were a high number of disabled people in KUSS County, and he actually had the state economist, and I'm going to try and find that and get it to you, but it probably needs to be updated because it has been a while, that 10% higher than the state in some age groups for numbers of disabilities in KUSS County. So when we're talking about looking at grants, if we have that kind of information and make our case better, there's certainly recognizing, and the age group was not elderly, it was, you know, in the, pardon me, the 45 to 55 range, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. David Barnes.
David Barnes.
Good afternoon, I'm David Barnes. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who spoke and presented earlier. Very informative, and I, I think I know more now than I did when I walked into the room. One of the things I want to talk about is, you know, I'm, I'm one of these people who came here from out of state. You know, I, I, my money that comes in every month, I spend almost 100% of my income in Curry County, but I don't need a job to do it. You know, it's money that comes in. No system supports itself unless there's other input from the outside. You know, over time, systems wear away and they erode, and they eat their, their, their seed corn, basically. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm just, you know, seniors and retirees and other people who move here, we're kind of important to what's happening in Curry County. One of the things that I've, with what Julie was saying, is these programs to come up with and help people with things, I just gotta ask, where are we getting the money from? You know, we don't have any money. I've been listening to, to budget hearings in here for four years now. We just don't have any. You know, and I don't know where you profess, profess to get this. You know, me, myself, I, my income and my housing costs, I'm at 60% of my income. Do I get money towards my house? You know, I mean, I live in a decent house, it doesn't need a lot of work, I already did that, out of my own pocket. You know, it's, I just, you know, we're, like Mr. Eddington said, like Julie said, we need to spend money on this, and I just don't know where that money comes from. I've, I've listened for four years now, as people have fought tooth and nail not to spend a dime out of our road fund, and I, I really don't think that this is a pro, this is something that we should be spending it on. So, you know, before we start moving and before we start changing things, we need to find out where the money is coming from. Lastly, you know, I, I lived in South Florida when Hurricane Andrew came through town. I lived in New Jersey when, when Hurricane Sandy came through there. My parents' home was destroyed by it. You know, once we start showing desperation, we have this emergency declaration now, once we start showing desperation, I just want to warn you that you get the worst of the flotsam and jetsam come in, and, and wanna make money on it, you know? So we call them back east, it's the scammers. It's the people who are gonna come in, do shoddy work, and to take money and run. You know, we've, by our desperation, we've flung the door open for these people, and are screaming for them to please come here. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
All right, so do we have anyone that had a particular question from this? Oh, Ms. Methson, I'm sorry, you had something you wanted to bring up.
So if we're done with public comment, I wanted to make sure we took the opportunity to introduce the Housing Task Force, and those members that represent a variety of nonprofits and local agencies that have been meeting for quite some time, and really have been looking forward to sharing with you guys what they've been working on. And I was hoping that Rob Foster would come up and kind of introduce everybody, and see if he couldn't take the lead on giving a little bit of history. Thanks. Thanks, Rob.
Good afternoon, ma'am. Good afternoon, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Summer. Thank you, Commissioners, and to the Curry County staff for hosting this workshop, obviously, such a very important topic, and for your participation in the Curry Housing Task Force up till now. I know many of you have attended our meetings. Most of you already know the formation of the task force goes back many years, involving many key stakeholders, many dedicated community builders. And the effort started with community meetings and focus groups, as people, you know, in the past, became increasingly concerned about housing issues, and then became formalized following the publication of the Housing Action Plan that Thomas Eddington spoke about earlier in the fall of 2018. And as you know, the task force is focused on collaboration. We believe that we can accomplish more by working together than by working separately. And our purpose statement is to coordinate and network individual and community resources to leverage opportunities for collectively beneficial housing development. And we currently maintain an email roster of more than 80 organizations and individuals. I know many of you get my emails, so appreciate that. We hold regular monthly meetings, and our efforts are coordinated by a really great, diverse, eight-member core team or steering committee, if you'd like, and most of whom are in attendance today. If I could introduce them briefly, I think you know most of them already. Georgia Nowlin, of course, longtime community activist in Curry County, currently representing a number of different organizations. Beth Barker Hidalgo with, oh, in the back now, she moved. Curry Community Impact Manager of United Way of Southwestern Oregon, and of course, also the Chair of the Curry Homeless Coalition. And your own Summer Madison, the Economic Development Coordinator, and also a member of the Gold Beach City Council. Tammy Kaufman, member of the Gold Beach City Council. Michelle Martin from Neighbor Works Amcoa. Shara Luther, who's my counterpart in Coos County overseas, organizes the Coos County Housing Action Team, also with United Way. And Jen Schaefer, who's the Executive Director of United Way of Southwestern Oregon. So if we have the time, if we have a few moments.
Mark Turner.
Mark is not currently on our, our steering committee. We would love to have her.
She come down from Coos Bay, much appreciated, and...
She is, is definitely participated in our meetings, and also plays a key role up in Coos Bay as well. And many others here have been regular participants in our monthly meetings.
I hope we didn't forget anyone.
And of course, I'm, my organization Collaborative Development, we provide organizational management strategic planning services for the task force. And so if we have the time, and if you allow us, some of the task force members have some comments on some different aspects of our efforts, and I'd just like to invite them to come up at this point.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you for your time. As Rob mentioned, I'm Jen Schae from the Executive Director of United Way of Southwestern Oregon. We are not a housing expert, but we have a vested interest in housing, as it's a key foundation of our key focus areas of health, education, and financial stability. So a few years ago, my predecessor, Marsha Hart, offered to be the fiscal sponsor for the study that you heard from Thomas this afternoon. Part of her agreeing to enter into this process was that she was committed to seeing action happen. She was not interested in having a report sit on a shelf and nothing come out of it. So I really appreciate your comment, Commissioner Gold, about seeing tangible projects in action. That is really what our task force is really convening to do at this point, and I'm very excited to see this draft of goals. We just reached a point in our monthly meetings where we started to talk about goals, and then we heard about this meeting. And so we're very excited to hopefully collaborate with you and help to maybe ease the burden of the resource constraints to achieve some of your goals. So that's what I'll say.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Beth Barker Hidalgo. As Rob mentioned, I'm the Community Impact Manager for Curry County, United Way, Southwestern Oregon, and Chair of the Curry Homeless Coalition. We want to thank you for leaning forward on the issues of housing in Curry County. We're grateful that you're holding this workshop. The Homeless Coalition's been engaged in efforts to educate and advocate for increased affordable, safe, and stable housing inventory in the pursuit of a housing study in Curry County since about the fall of 2016. The Coalition felt so compelled to support efforts to pursue a housing study that we contributed funds towards the completion of what we now refer to as the Curry Housing Study Action Plan. We continue to serve on the Housing Task Force and the Core Team. We obviously have a particular focus on increased inventory for our community members who struggle to afford safe, stable housing, as well as those who require possibly permanent supportive or transitional housing with integrated services. So we recognize that those projects are a very heavy lift on any community, but we, we don't know what we don't know about those projects. What we, we talk about not having enough resources for those types of projects in our community, and I don't know one community that would argue that point. Even in an urban setting, you'll talk to people who work with our population that say they don't have enough resources and they don't have enough staff. So it's everywhere. We feel overwhelmed with the needs of our community members. But I'm proposing, we're proposing that we start down that pathway of figuring out maybe a gap analysis. Where are we now? Where do we need to be in order to afford, to support permanent supportive housing and transitional housing in Curry County? And as we tackle housing and all that entails, we are respectfully suggesting to the Board of Commissioners and staff that we start convening stakeholders, have these hard conversations about how we support that population in our community. So our mental health providers, our addictions providers, law enforcement, ORCA, we, we get everybody at the table, and, and Oasis, because they have lived experience, hands-on experience of working with this population in their shelter environment, so we could glean a lot of information from them. I would suggest that we look at some sustainable models. Road Retreat, Julie, you're familiar with Road Retreat over in Medford. They seem to be working a stepped, sustainable approach to housing folks that are a little more challenging to, to bring into the housing spectrum. So I, I believe that if we pursued bringing the stakeholders together, that it would eventually provide Curry County a map, and how we get to where we need to be, to be able to support that population in our community. In the meantime, we have unhoused people living in Curry County, and the population is as diverse as the needs. And not all who wander are lost, but some need a bit of support to achieve improved lives. Can we take a look at how we are addressing responding to impacts of homelessness on our community today? And are there missed opportunities to decrease the negative impacts of homelessness on the individuals and on the community? Can we have a conversation about what that might look like? And to close, I just thank you for providing us this opportunity to hear what you have planned, and to hear what the county has ambitions for, and then to listen to what, to what the Housing Task Force and the Core Team members are considering. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other public comment? Is it okay now? If we had any more?
No, no, we're not having...
I think Tammy and Michelle and Shara are gonna say something yet.
Okay.
So I'm Tammy Kaufman, I think you all know me. I'm on the Gold Beach City Council, and I'm a new member of the Core Team of the Housing Task Force, probably because I do a lot with housing. But I wanted to give a quick update, and I, I did write this down for you, what's going on with, with Gold Beach in the city limits. We've gotten a lot done. We got our accessory dwelling unit passed. If I recall correctly, in the Housing Action Plan Mr. Eddington created, we need about 60 units countywide in 10 years. That's about six a year. So that kind of gives us a goal, and I believe in the last 18 months, we've gotten three accessory dwelling units completed. I think that's pretty good at getting towards that goal. Our ordinance actually prohibits vacation rentals in the accessory dwelling units. So we, we did think of that. We had somebody that was smart, I don't remember who it was. We did receive a grant from DLCD to complete a study, and we will begin that implementation. It was a buildable land survey. We did a buildable land survey about 20 years ago, and the Planning Commission rejected it multiple times because it was done wrong. And this time, very well done, actually took a look at not just land and how it was zoned, but actually if there was floodplain issues and landslide issues, and, and reasons why we shouldn't include that. We were a little surprised that they said we do not need an increased urban growth boundary. What they did say is that we need more density in our zones. And Gold Beach is not different than Curry County. We were forced to do zoning, we didn't want to do zoning. And so we're kind of all in that same boat, where the state said, thou shalt have zoning, so just draw lines. And so that's what we did. So that's gonna be a little more difficult to do, because some people are gonna say, oh, I don't want five houses next door to me, I only want one. So we're gonna have to work on that process. But I think it's doable, and probably in the next year, we'll be able to update our comprehensive plan with their suggestions. We're not gonna accept all of them, but, but many of them are very good. One of the things that I noted in both our report and in the Eddington report is that there's a lot of vacant homes in Gold Beach and in Curry County, but they're not available to be lived in. They're second homes, third homes. They just sit empty until somebody comes and visits them. I don't know if we can get those in the inventory, if we have a recession, possibly, because they won't be able to afford the payments without renting them. But, and that's what happened in, in 2008, '09, when I used to do that kind of management. We got a lot of those empty homes interested. We are working on a vacation rental ordinance, and our goal is to limit the number that are allowed. And we, we found from another, I think it was Lincoln County, that they self-certify, that they're actually meet a reasonable code. So we're probably gonna do that. I had thought about maybe doing something with the county to have a certification program, but if you make them self-certify, that's a lot easier. And it goes more in the spirit of those of us that believe in private ownership. So we're gonna work on that, and there's plenty of room for a moratorium on vacation rentals, because if you look at the statistics, they're very, they're not close to occupancy. So there's actually too many of them. They're nowhere near close to 80 to 100%, which they need to be, to be viable. While it's a separate entity, the Urban Renewal Agency has added housing to its goals, and future budgets will address housing. The concept we think, we, we think will be best would be to encourage businesses to add apartments upstairs or next door. Traditionally, downtowns always did that. We got away from, from that. And just about all of our Urban Renewal Agency, those would have ocean views, the, the upstairs. So they could be really nice efficiency units. So we're, we plan on encouraging that. I've been in, authorized to look into applying for CD, CDBG money. That's such a hard acronym for me to say. A block grant, to look into adding more housing, and we'll probably partner with Neighbor Works Amcoa, and maybe even the county, if you guys are available to do one, because they were talking about doing more housing, but then they're also talking about a repair program that I guess you guys are talking about. So maybe we'll be partners again. For statistical purposes, we've approved two townhomes, a single-family dwelling, five manufactured homes not in parks, three accessory dwelling units this year. Two manufactured homes were replaced in parks, which brings us closer to the, to the Housing Action Plan goals. And if I recall, and from 2010 to 2016, there were only 18.6 applications countywide, so now we've done 11. So I think that's a pretty good improvement. Pretty happy about that. There's a lot more to do, but I think we're, we're getting there. I, I was told that the county would like us to, as a city, to also do an emergency declaration, or to, to affirm yours. And I'd like to invite, if, I'd like to put it on the agenda for next meeting, I think Councilor Madison could help me do that. But could somebody come and explain to us what the benefit would be? Because I don't understand that. So we'll put that invitation out. And then one last thing that I just added in listening to the wonderful presentations today, you guys are doing great, you're on the, I think you're on the right class, plan. Because I deal a lot with manufactured housing, ORS 197493 allows RVs in manufactured home parks. The reason the state decided that was okay is because in the older manufactured home communities, and there's a lot of them, because nobody builds them anymore, the units were eight, 10 feet wide, 12 on a really good day. And you, they don't build manufactured homes that size anymore, but they build RVs eight and 10 feet wide. So the, the county may put more restrictions on that, but I'm encouraging you not to. I also manage Saunders Creek Homeowners Cooperative, this is one of those Rock USA CASA co-ops, it's been a co-op since 2011, and there are three RVs there. And the post office came and told them they were transient, and they don't get to use their mailboxes. And I saw a man just about blow a cap. He's like, I am not a transient, I have a nice home. He has an RV, he built a carport over his RV. It's Alan Stornes, most of you probably know him. And he is not a transient, he has probably the nicest house there. And, and the president of that co-op was able to get the post office to continue delivery. But they don't feel like they're transients. They have a 50-year lease agreement, they live in an RV, but they call that home. But there is a difference between that and the, the people that are camping everywhere.
So would you suggest, Tammy, that we set in some sort of a restriction, that the RVs be newer models in order to avoid having transients and, and that sort of thing in there?
Um, I believe most of them already have some sort of a standard, and I think it's a, Beth was telling me about it, that it's like 20 or 30 years old, then the, the parts just don't match, and you can't meet code. And the plumbing wears out. So yeah, so probably 20 or 30 years would be that, that line, unless somebody's refurbished it. So, but yeah, I agree with that. Thank you so much for all you're doing.
Thank you.
I'm so proud of, of all the work that's...
Tammy, thank you. Michelle Martin?
I don't know if I'm wrapping up or pulling the, the end result. Okay, Georgia's next, okay. My name's Michelle Martin, I am with Neighbor Works Amcoa, and our service area is Coos-Curry-Douglas County. So many of the things that Julie was talking about are things that we dabble in, that we are proficient in, things that we want to do, things that we're working on now. The, the position that you're talking about is something that we also have identified, both internally and then through the Housing Task Force, and are working on that funding now to really bring a development person here to the coast. So about two and a half years ago, we hired a developer there out of our headquarters in Roseburg. in Roseburg. At the... Just at that same time, we also were doing our strategic planning, looking at doubling the number of units that we had in affordable housing across our service area. So we were looking at a very aggressive strategic plan for the next five years, we're about halfway through that now, of doing what we had done in 25 years in five years. And we knew that that really meant that we had to step up our game, bring in those folks who had the expertise. That's where a real estate developer came into place and started developing that pipeline. The second half of this is really about expanding those housing numbers on the coast. And so we have several projects that we're looking at up and down the coast from Florence to Brookings and are working with several partners, both here in the room and, you know, that we're not able to make it here today. So that development position is something that we have identified, that there are so many opportunities here, and it really just needs that body that's helping to steer those projects moving forward. The other thing that we've identified, and Julie's kind of touched a little bit on it with the CDBG, we have so many of our community cities and counties that aren't eligible to apply for the CDBG in partnership with a nonprofit organization, simply because they either haven't met the requirements of spending down in their current CDBG, or they have a project that's kind of gotten sideways on them. And the county here, the cities here, are no different than any of the rest of our service area or across the state. I can attest to that. We currently are working on a project with the city of Coos Bay as the lead applicant, Douglas County with the city of Reed'sport, and then Coos County for this next go-around that is open right now. And then our intention is to circle back into Curry County. And I understand that the county should be eligible in talking with a business organ by the time that that opens up. So we are definitely interested in that home repair program. We want to see... We have the ability to have two projects going on every year. And so that's... Each project is $400,000. It's about $300,000 of that is strictly in home repair. So that's $600,000 in home repair that's happening in our community, which we know that trickle effect into the construction world, into all the other things that go into home repair. And we want to be able to help facilitate that happening. And so we're internally creating a liaison-type position that will be that dedicated person that works with our cities and counties that are so small that don't have the capacity to manage the reporting and the requirements in that CDBG space and be able to help facilitate that. So, you know, we are definitely willing and able to partner and looking for all those opportunities. Everything that was brought up today is fantastic, and it's nice to see when we did our strategic plan, we came around to all the cities and counties and talked to them about who Neighbor Works is and what we do and what everybody thinks we do, and kind of had those conversations. And so it's nice to see that things are coming around full circle and things are actually happening, and it's fantastic. So thank you guys all for allowing us to...
Just one question.
Yes.
Is Neighbor Works using tax credits to help encourage developers to get here and do things?
Yes. So we've worked with the Lytech, the low-income housing tax credits. We also are partnering with organizations like South Coast Development Council and other partners on the Opportunity Zones. So Port Orford is one of those. That's where that project comes in. City of Coos Bay has some area. Douglas County also has some area. And we want to be able to bring those forward to the state to really fund that space. So Opportunity Zones in Oregon, there's still... There are some areas that are doing really well in actually implementing. Some are still struggling. But there is a team of folks that are working on specifically around housing and keeping housing at the forefront of the Opportunity Zone funding to make sure that it doesn't just fall into the business realm.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll make it real fast. We're kind of bumping up against the clock.
Sure.
Thank you. Real quick, I want to recognize Sam Bob, SCDC, made the trip down here from Coos Bay. Two great Curry County volunteers. Dave Bassett, would you stand up, please, for a second? How about Jim Johnson in the back there? He's been working and helping people absolutely forever, has worked tirelessly for years. Good to see you, Georgia. I'm just gonna... I'm going to process the presentations today, and I was anticipating some really good educational parts of this whole complex issue. And so honestly, I can't wait to print it out and read again and learn all that I can. And I'm just going to say thank... This is an incredibly good collective group that is here because they care and because they want to see changes. A lot of people drove down here from Coos County to make that effort. And I'm just going to ask you to keep staying involved, point us in the right direction, give us all the information you possibly can, share your vision. And just starting with Mr. Eddington, all the way through Tammy, it just... I can't... Again, very anxious to reread. Georgia?
Yeah, and I want to add to that, to Commissioner Boyce, the Wild Rivers Coast Alliance, Jim Sealy and Maria Simons were also here, which is part of our core team as well. So they came down from Baton, so wanted to appreciate that. And Neighbor Works Uncoa has been a longtime and valuable partner to Curry County in all the affordable housing that they've done. I am Georgia Nowlin, and I just wanted to, first of all, thank you, Commissioners, for focusing on housing. I know, Commissioner Boyce, you've been out there doing it. In fact, when Julie mentioned All Care Funding, yes, that was probably next to the last piece of housing dollars that were utilized from the original $100,000 that was set aside for Curry County. I know, Commissioner Boyce, you were working on working with the different associations to utilize some of that money before it was given back to All Care. But when it came back to All Care, it came directly to the CAC, the Community Advisory Councils, to go ahead and fund many of the projects that you had vetted and worked with. And then we had to set aside for some of the money to deal with housing assessment. So all that money has been utilized, and the last very small piece of it was utilized to hire Rob Foster to help coordinate this Housing Task Force. So it has been well-used here in Curry County.
Thanks for the follow-through.
Yes. I just want to say one thing, though, as far as strategizing and talking about the properties that you have available to utilize for development. One of the things that this task force is looking at is a possible community land trust working in partnership with nonprofits as well as the county. And what a community land trust is, and I'll read this to you because it sums it up best. The community land trust model works by purchasing land on behalf of the community and holding it in trust in perpetuity. The CLT, Community Land Trust, can sell the land and structures on the properties with option to repurchase or enter into a long-term lease, typically a ground lease, during which the tenant can make improvements to the property and during which time the CLT maintains an interest in maintenance of the structures and property. If the buyer chooses to sell, the CLT retains the right to repurchase the structures for agreed-upon formula, giving the buyer partial equity. The remaining equity stays with the CLT, and the structure is resold below market rate. The cost of the land is forever retained within the trust, so it's always going to be affordable housing. So those are one of the concepts we're also looking at. So I guess what I'm suggesting for the county is be strategic, perhaps, before you start selling off pieces of property, of looking at maybe collectively working with an entity, perhaps like Neighbor Works Uncoa, and setting up something like that. So, you know, plan ahead, and strategy is a real important approach. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nowlin. So I think... Oh, Mr. Foster, okay, go ahead. We're kind of up against the clock, just so you know.
I just have two comments to finish. I have a small handout that I think most of you have probably seen before that talks about the purpose and vision and statement of the task force. And then also just wanted to, if you're not already getting my emails, I want to encourage you to make my contact information. You can get on the email list. Our next monthly meeting is Monday, November... September 30th, so about a month from now, here in Gold Beach at the library. So that's it. Thank you so much for giving us this time. I'll give you this handout.
Thank you. While he's doing that, I would like to say thank you to everyone for traveling here and spending your time here. And I know time is valuable, and we appreciate your interest in Curry County. I will say this, I think right now you have a Board of Commissioners that eyes and ears are wide open here. We would like to hear all you have, as Commissioner Boyce just said. I'll reiterate, you know, we would like to sit together with different groups, picking maybe one or all of us at different times to brainstorm what I call just chew on it for a while, and let's all sit together and find the right answers for Curry County and Southern Oregon. It's going to take a collaborative effort. I would also ask that the cities in this county join with us and join our resources, and let's pool those resources together and act as one for the betterment of the people and constituents in this county. So I applaud you all for coming here. I thank you. I'm a little bit sorry that we are a little bit brief, but we have a board meeting in order to open our board up to the entire county. This board has agreed to travel for some of our board meetings, so we are doing our board meeting tonight in Brookings in order to have the constituents of that city and harbor be able to attend one of our board meetings that might not normally be allowed or able to. So thank you again for coming. I appreciate everyone's content that you provided for us, and I look forward to, as I speak for the rest of this board, and our director of operations, we look forward to working with all of you. My door is open to all of you at any time. Thank you so much, and this meeting is adjourned.